Thank you for your patience. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 3:09. Present today from the board are myself, Cindy Gora Ha and Amalia Pangolinen. Absent is Zen Bivauta, excused, he's off on a contract, and Julie Duenis is not here. So we do not have an official forum, which means we cannot conduct business or vote on anything, but that's not why you're here today. And since we don't have a forum, we can't really adopt the agenda, but we'll just move along with the draft. The main objective of this meeting is for the artists to have the opportunity to share with the board and the executive director their concerns. And I've had the honor and pleasure to work with many of you on grant applications, but many of the board, and even Oriana, has not been able to participate in that practice. And perhaps they have not heard the level of concern the artists have. And we want to hear from you first, and then I will update you on what I've had meetings with procurement and conversations with the secretary of finance. But what I would like to do now is to just open this up and give you a chance to talk to the board and to... I want to recognize the Wellas here. She's a member of the... she's the resident executive of IAO. And Lenny Leon, the executive director of the museum. So we have some of the CMI leadership here in the room to also hear your concerns and help us all move forward together. So I'd like to open it up for comments. And I encourage you to speak your hearts and so that they can hear this difficult situation that we're in. You want to start, Gus?
Okay, let me start.
And if you would be, sometimes to start and just say your name.
Yeah, my name is Gus Dumar. I'm one of the practitioners that Arts Council always have a contract with us to go out and do the outreach for some of these schools around here. So my concern here, not only that concern, frustrating, is the payment. You know, I know that Arts Council has done their work already for us. But when it comes to procurement or treasury, they said, oh, this and this. So how do we... even a lot of us, like, how do we believe these people now? Last year, it take nine months. I know that it's a grant, it's not a local funds. Because if it's a local funds, I think they'll pay us right away. But my frustration with this is Arts Council has done their job already. Every time we receive, you know, I don't know, excuse... I called last time to, what's that, procurement, and they said, oh, because we have a new boss, we have new rules. I said, okay, that's very, very good. Every time you guys have new boss for the agencies where, you know, the money is this, you're telling us that we have a new rule? So I'm asking all these guys, you know, we go out and do this just to come today because I get frustrated so much already. But I don't want to stop because I love to work with the students and the teachers. The only thing that I'm asking is why it has to take more than 30 days? Because I know for a fact that if it's a grant, once it's approved, it shouldn't be 30 days. Six month, seven months, eight months, nine months. Some people, some of these people, like practitioners, are like, I'm not going out. But they're scheduled already. I would call them, hey, you know, we're going out today. No, I'm done. Because some of them, like, it's one year and a half, they haven't get their payment. The only thing I'm asking is, can you guys do it at least 30 days? Because we're out there doing, the services is finished, we're done.
We did.
So honestly, please, I don't want to stop going out to the schools just because of all the issues that we're having. Maybe you guys can fix it. And I'm counting on everybody, the board, the director. I just wish, I was asking the director if they can invite, what's that, procurement? And treasury, because we want to question them too. Because I know that you guys won't answer everything if we ask you in regards to treasury and what's that, procurement. But anyways, maybe next time.
I can share some answers when we're done with this. Okay, thank you, Gus. Next?
Julie?
My name is Julie Dumar. I am an employee, a government employee, but whenever they ask me to come out and assist Arts Council, I would apply to come out. But like Gus said, I'm allowed to fill in the blanks where if, for example, Lonnie this schedule, she cannot make it, then they would just ask me, and I would just fill in. I provide all my supplies. And there's services that I did that is going on two years already that I haven't been compensated. So, but I don't want to stop, like Gus said. I enjoy going, especially outreach to children. We're trying to preserve our cultures. So I know it's hard, not being compensated, but I love doing the outreach for our kids. And as a matter of fact, I do outreach to bilingual teachers. So it's not a matter of... but still, you guys, we need to get paid for what we're doing, you know? It motivates us to come out more. There are times too when Arts would reach out and I'm kind of hesitant to come out. Because for me, it's... we're not working for free. I mean, we need to be compensated.
Yes.
Like I said, like Gus said, I'm tired of asking too. So I'm just laying low. One of the things is doing a government worker too, you know? I try to help. But I love teaching the kids. I really love doing outreach.
Lonnie, do you want to add something?
There's any there?
Hi. I'm sorry, late. My name is Alastair De La. I'm also new to this. Like what Julie said, it's teaching, teaching our students, teaching our kids the value of our culture. I do liga tutur. I learned it from Carolinian Affairs when they had the program to come out and learn. I'm a Carolinian, Carolinian Chamorro. I grew up in a Chamorro environment. Carolinian was... my dad is a Carolinian. ELO, my dad is Carnelio Taita Kostru, ELO family. And we were never part of the Carolinian growing up. I don't know why, but, you know, I miss it and I want to learn it. So when the liga tutur's teaching came up, I went and learned. And like Julie said, I love to come. When they approached me, I was like, you know, I was scared at first. But then, when I went up to the students, they're really eager to learn. They're really eager to sit down and really do what we do. But like all of us struggling artists, the beads gets... The bead price is getting expensive. It started at $7, and then it went up to $8, now it's $11.50 for the bead. I just came back from, I just landed today actually. And I was in Houston, and I took advantage of buying all those, you know, different colors to try and incorporate, make it more for us to make our product shine up. But like what I explained to Nick and... what's her name again? I'm sorry.
Orlando.
Orlando. This is not the... outreach is not a new thing. It's not a... it's been going on for ages. So getting artists paid is something that I'm new at. But, you know, like the schools reach out to you guys, Arts Council. They send you guys an email saying, okay, this is the... we need you guys in these dates. No? And like I was telling, see Nick and see Orlando. Budget out that for the month of May, we have Dandam Elementary School, Dandam Middle School, Canang, Chacha, and Tamapa. They have their schedules already. You guys plot out those dates. And if you're saying it's the granters, no, that is your obstacle. I don't understand why that should be. That they... it's not like today, the school say, I need five artists for tomorrow. No, they plan this out because they have schedules. So they send you guys an email, okay, we need five artists for ukulele. No? We have, we need artists for kalaza throwing, chanting, no? Liga tutur making, weaving. So you guys plan out that schedule, apply for the grant for that particular school. And if the artist doesn't show up, then you reach out to another artist and say, hey, so-and-so is not coming in, but we need you. And when that project is done and we submit our pictures and our testament, we get paid. Like, I don't know how you guys do it with Indigenous and Carolinian Affairs. Their people get paid in two weeks.
They're different because they're local funding.
Huh?
They're different because they're local funding.
That's not what I heard from your staff. They said they applied for the grants through the Arts Council.
Okay, can I say my side?
Yeah.
Okay, for, I believe that the CAO, the Carolinian Affairs office, they have a nonprofit that actually works with them. So whatever was appropriated from their requests from the SNIL, it goes down into the nonprofit. Then when you do your professional service, once it's complete, the check is written. On my office, I do not have a nonprofit that I work with that draws down the money. What I do is I go through procurement. But again, with the appropriation that I get from SNIL or from the public benefit. Now, you mentioned something about schedules from the school. In the real world, that sounds perfect, but it doesn't work that way because sometimes we get it in three days. We get the schedule requests, three days, that a teacher will say, "Good morning" or "Good afternoon, may I have three or four artists?" This is what we're planning to do. And this is, aside from our duties, I believe you're doing that too. We have to scramble around and see what artists are available. If only we have so many or a list, a directory of artists that we can tap to. That's the reason why some of Indigenous Affairs. I often use the saying, because these are the ones that come in and our reps are familiar with. And as much as we want to go out and say, hey, register so that we can get your number, your MUNIS ID, so that we can invite you guys in. But sometimes too, the requester would request for certain art. So not a liga tutur, not a dancing, not a ukulele, but something different. So we have to again look. I'm also concerned because you said that you learn. What we also want, especially coming from Indigenous Affairs office. If you guys are going out promoting our culture, I actually want us to make sure that the liga tutur that you guys are making, it has to be really authentic by making the kids understand why it's made this way, why that color is selected. Because I know that we don't have purple, we don't have other, this other fancy color. But there's a reason why we have liga tutur. And then I hope that you guys also incorporate the culture, what this liga tutur is used for. I know that we have the, you know, days are changing, times are changing, where we come up with teaching or a little trinket. But we always have to come back and teach the kids why we're connected to that artifact. No? So please, when you guys are doing your demonstration, your felicitation, include that. Because I also spoke with PSS. We need to make sure that when you guys are in the school, that it goes with the curriculum. Because we're not, you guys are not there to babysit, honestly. And I've seen, I've seen where we set you guys up, and then the instructor would just walk away. And then you guys are stuck with students. Students that you guys only are not even familiar, how to... Their names or how to make sure that the discipline is there, right?
Yeah.
So we need to work together with CCAC, PSS. But you guys, you artists, I know that you guys are here, concerned with funding. So I believe, Emma, you need to share what we all got from finance, the message that we got from finance, yeah. But we hear you guys, we hear that each agency has different ways of payment. I do not have federal funds, CCAC does. Yeah, and that's the difference. I would get my funding from the local, from the local accounts, from our SNIL appropriation or from the public benefit.
All I'm saying is, this is not our first rodeo. Yeah. This rodeo's been riding, it's been riding for ages and ages. We just need to perfect it, like find a way to perfect it where the artists come in, you know, and honestly, the bind, when I was called to come in, you know, teach, I went and I bought all, I was ecstatic, no? See, I was happy that I was asked to do that. I went out and I bought all the equipment, and I was overwhelmed. $100 was not enough. And you're talking about five periods with 20 students in each period to have enough to teach, you know, to have enough beads to teach them. So you know, it's, 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 just get us the equipment.
Get the supplies.
Yeah. You know, yeah, the supply. If we are going to be able to teach it, no? We need, and we are artists, we should have our own supplies. We can use that, but help us replenish it, no? So it's just, it's a two-way, it's a two-way, you know?
Thank you, Emma. Thank you, the Wellas. Anybody else?
I got mine.
Yes.
Go ahead, Quinn.
Okay. Quinn, and then Lenny.
Hi, everybody. My name is Quinn Bredy, and I'm not from here. I moved here in the end of 2019. And one of the first things that, one of the first memories I have of Saipan other than like learning the beautiful beaches and meeting people was my wife and I were living on an artist's salary. We were teaching music and art. And I remember a time whenever we were scraping together pennies to buy our first jugs of water here. And that, I wouldn't have it any other way, it was a beautiful time. But I remember about a year into our experience of living on Saipan, going up to the Arts Council, getting registered, and being told information about the Arts Council, about the grants that were being offered that was not correct. And that information was like, oh, we have these matching grants available, you have to put in a certain amount of money. And now I've been told retroactively that that's just not true. So communication is mainly what I wanted to speak on, that, and we'll get to the trust side of it. But being able to have people explain, okay, we do have this money here, this will help make a difference in following through on this process. Again, one of the things, and I will steal this because my wife says this all the time, is during World War II, one of the things that the advisors to Churchill asked is, we should immediately cut funding to the arts. We should pull back this money and put it into the military. And Churchill famously replied, then what are we... And Churchill famously replied, then what are we fighting for? Is cementing that culture. This is how we do it. This is exactly how you cement cultures. And I don't know what life is gonna be like twenty, fifty years down the road. I sure know that microbeach doesn't look the same way that it does. And having people document the way of life here is beyond important to me. If, and I'm assuming to everyone else. The other thing is I am terrible, absolutely terrible, at asking for money and for payment. And it's my least favorite part of the job. But I get really genuinely upset whenever I see other people not get payment. So I'm sitting over here and I see a couple of different instances around me of people who have rendered services. And we've all been burned before. It's hard to walk through this life without that. But without talking the government too much, the United States isn't always interested in preserving culture and heritage. This is an opportunity. This is a certain amount of money each and every year to help not let the culture wash away. And I'm C A E and everyone around you, around me. And I don't know, my heart just is full of love for the smiling faces around me.
Thank you, Quinn. Lenny, you there?
Go ahead.
Huh? That's okay.
No, 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 it's just something they did from the two directors.
Victoria? Um, yeah. What I'm hearing a lot of too is, I think a lot of the artists here love working with the kids and their bigger concern, it sounds like to me, is the fact that supply is so expensive. And that's actually why grants exist. Is because artists are willing to put in more time and not be fully compensated for that. They've been willing to do that throughout history. But what holds artists back from being able to share art and being able to make it themselves is usually the cost of supplies. Because supplies is usually, for good supplies, it's really difficult, one, to get here, so that makes it more expensive. And then, two, a lot of art supplies is just very overpriced. So right now, I think too, if there was possibly, I don't know, if there would be a solution, if there's a way to help artists with the supplies before they were to be fully paid or something like that, that might actually help with the longer wait times. It's just a thought that I had. I don't know if that's possible. I totally, I'm just speaking as someone from the limited information I have. But yeah, what Quinn shared is so true. I also think, I've been hearing some people talk about how there are kids struggling with identity here. And I think of how much art has helped me in my own identity and exploration of myself and what I believe. And I really do want to see art be more accessible, not just to kids in our community, but I want to see the artist community actually come together more on Saipan. So when we're talking about communication, that's definitely something my ideal, like, dream as an artist would be if there was possible to have like a registry for artists based on their different areas of study so that artists could actually connect with each other. If businesses could go to the Arts Council's like online directory and see, here's all the photographers who are registered with us. Here's all the musicians. Here's all of the painters. These ones specifically love murals, like, and they could actually start to connect with them. I think the biggest strength in anything is community. And right now, something that I have found working with artists, especially in the last month or two, like Emma was saying with the Creative West Grant, is so many of them have felt that there is no community amongst the artists here. And the Arts Council actually being able to have that valuable information and use that to help us build a stronger community as artists, I think, would be incredible. My biggest concern for sure is the process of grants because for artists to be able to continue what they're doing, they are needing support, which is why that funding is allocated in the first place. But if we were able to streamline grants in some way, we did do, we did try out the new system the other day and it was beautiful. It worked really well. Artists were super excited about that. And so if something of either that or something like it could be approved and made live, I think there would be so much more interest in artists realizing that, oh my gosh, this thing that I have put so much sacrifice and love into could actually be boosted a little bit higher. And Quinn's talking about when we first moved here and were struggling. I think of how resourceful I had to be with the supplies that I had. So I went a lot into watercolor and I only recently was able to afford oil paints. And because of that, I was able to paint the piece that, was it Fling Tree? That everyone was so moved by and it was an incredible experience. But I didn't have that for years. And so I had to make do with what I did have. And there's a lot of artists here like that who are wonderful artists, who have the passion and willing to give the time. But if through grants they could actually get the supplies, that would be incredible for our community and what could be produced. Saipan's a really special place and I see that it creates really powerful art because of that.
Thank you, Victoria.
Yeah. Divine, would you speak about your experience with the Arts Council and applying for a grant?
Yeah, so I was actually gonna go based off of what you said. There are, you were told there were matching grants. And so I also heard about that. And my partner and I, Antonia Levasa, were both shell carvers, specifically with Spandless and Hema, the clam. And so we were super excited. We were told that there's all these funds that need to get out to the community because that there's a grant, you know? And you know, grants have deadlines and things. And if you don't spend the money, then it gets taken away, you know, or it doesn't get used. So we were told to shoot for the stars, like whatever we needed, you know? Just go out there and tell them everything you needed. And there's not really like a funding limit, you know? Because there was all this money. That's what was told to us. So we applied and we were super excited. Months went by, almost maybe a year, I would say. And we were finally called back. The first time we were called back, I believe it was almost a year later. And they were like, okay, so we're gonna get started on approving these grants, but we need you to come back and change the dates because so much time had passed, you know, like it needs to line up. So we changed the dates. We were excited. We were like, okay. So finally, we're gonna get started on what we wanted to do, our projects and everything. Hold on, I have my notes here. We were called back again the second time because there was a problem with our budget. We were like, okay, cool. They're trying to help us. They want to make sure everything's in line. So we did that. We changed the budget. They said, okay. The third time, we were called back to change the amount to under fifteen K because we were asking for too much. We were like, okay, that's fine. So we put it under fifteen K. The fourth time, we were called back, they were saying, sorry. They were saying there was gonna be a board meeting at the end of the week. And if we were, if we wanted to change our budget to under five K, we would definitely get approved. So we're like, okay, whatever money we can get at this point, we'll go ahead and follow their directions, you know? Because we're getting this straight from C C A C. They're calling us. So we changed it under five K. But then when changing the amount from such a drastic, you know, amount, like we're asking for fifteen, then lower, then to five K, we had to change our project because we couldn't deliver. With the amount we were asking, we couldn't deliver everything that we were saying that we would initially. So we had to go back, change our project, kind of make it smaller. And so we did that. And they were saying that after this board meeting, once we changed it down to five K, we'd get approved. After that, we didn't hear anything. We called to follow up. They said the board meeting was postponed. And we were like, okay. And they were like, yeah, you'll be getting a call. You'll be hearing from us. And we never heard anything. My partner was the one that got the third and fourth calls to change the budget down to fifteen K and then down below five K. And she said when she went in to go turn it in each time, she said that they threw it in a box on a kitchen table. And that one of the instances, when he was looking for our application, they were eating. And she said the box was just there and he didn't wash his hands. He was going through the applications, you know, getting it dirty and whatnot. And you couldn't find our application, went to another box. And she said it was very discouraging to see that, you know, all that sensitive information, those applications that were so much effort and hard that were put into that were just thrown into a box somewhere, you know? And it just, it wasn't organized. It didn't feel professional. And she said at that point, she lost all hope that we were even gonna get anything. And, sorry, very emotional because we put a lot of effort into it, you know?
Have you heard anything since?
No, we haven't. So my concern isn't getting paid because we don't even know if we got approved, you know? So if someone's telling you, if you're gonna change it, you'll get the funds? And then we take it seriously, you know? Because we're passionate about what we do and want to continue to share what we love with the community and to keep our culture alive. That's the goal. And then when things like this fall through, everyone's like, oh, that's just how it is, you know, like that's how it is around here. And we're like, that's unacceptable, you know? Because this is federal funds or that's what we're told, you know? And to see it being handled that way is just very saddening. Because that, we don't know if this, if it'll continue this way, you know? Like if we're still gonna be able to keep getting funding from, or federal funding, you know? If things aren't handled right or proper procedures and protocols aren't in place, then the money will be taken away. And then they won't trust this organization or they won't trust C C A C with handling funds anymore. And so all this, you know, overthinking and whatnot and that happened. And so now, we still don't know what happened. All that effort we put into writing that grant and everything, it's just, I don't know. And that's where we're at now. Sorry.
You know, thank you.
Very emotional.
Because I know for every story like that, there are multiple others who weren't here today.
Yeah, for sure.
That's why we need to hear that.
Is there a reason why you were asked to change your amount?
We have no idea. We were called by two different people. I was talking to someone and she was talking to someone. And she said each time they called back, it was for a different reason and it was a different person. And I was like, are you gonna get the name? And she's like, yes, I'll get the name. But you know, at this point, it didn't really matter to her because we're just getting past, our applications are just getting passed or changed. And we don't know what the reason is. And then you're telling us, if you do this, you will get paid. Well, we're just gonna follow what you're saying, you know? Because it's coming from the people that we're supposed to be trusting with the funds that can disperse and everything, so.
Sue, do you want to add something or any of your experiences?
I actually, you know, I'm kind of new to, just like we used to move back here in 2019. So I actually just started getting to, you know, the, going back into, because my, always my goal is to bring back our culture. And then like, you know, some of you might feel emotional. I want to get back to where my mom had raised me and so that I can start presenting the art that must pass down to me. So I had actually just started last year. And then with what Victoria had said about, you know, getting information and sharing each other's passions so that we can be able to learn and from each other, maybe teach and learn from each other. Because see, what I'm hearing from Loyola, for example, is we're having someone here teaching lhiga tutur and you know, the culture is not really quite maybe, I don't know whether, you know, it's really quite behind the, you know, how our ancestry have passed it down to us. So my main concern is that I've actually been a vendor just one year. I call myself a vendor because I also do the Soblo Market. But I am a registered artist. And what I do is, you know, trying to bring back the medicinal history that my mom had passed down to me. I also do the coconut oil, the traditional way. And then I teach even at the Soblo Market. I do stand there and half the time I'm teaching people about the coconut, making the coconut oil, making the medicine and all of that. But here's my thing here is that I want to know, or maybe it's not just me, is for us to share and know each other and to know who's being out there. Because every time I go, and this is my second experience at the Taste of the Marianas, hence the Taste of the Marianas, right? It should have been things that are, like I was first told, that should have been something that came from our islands. But what I'm noticing here since I came and I've gone to a lot of this culture events is I see a lot of them and I know I don't just speak on my behalf. I've got actually people that are coming to me to tell me that, you know, we have a lot of so-called registered artists out there that we really maybe need to streamline and we need to start learning and seeing actually what they really do. Because being a registered artist can be on paper and you are registered on paper, but you are not actually out there to present your art, to pass our culture to our kids. Because what I've been seeing is that, like I said, and this is just talking, there's two gentlemen here that, you know, just being there and we are observing. I'm very observant at that and, you know, especially my husband is like, is like the patrolman over there. But you know what? It's going back to that word. Let's bring back the arts that we are making and presented to our people, marketed to our people the way we were taught by our ancestors. Because what I'm seeing a lot is, there's a lot out there and I'm hearing it from other artists that will tell me, hey, that's not supposed to be like that, is the buy and sell. I forgot to bring a sample worm. I actually bought one stuff. So I can actually really, and I totally forgot to just show you that, you know, just looking at the packaging, I spent so much time just to even do my own packaging the way I go wanna present it. But we're having a lot of this buy and resell artists that are supposedly artists that are, I don't know if they're really artists because all I'm seeing is buy and resell. And that really hurts us. The real people like myself that wakes up every morning to kaka, to harakas the coconut and work all day to make that coconut oil to sell it to you for basically nothing. And there's these people that are making lots of money. And I see with my two eyes, making all this money, going and buying out there in China or wherever and selling all this jewelry and all these here things that they sell there. And believe me, they are making money. And I've seen that with my two eyes. So those are the kind of things. And then going back to the taste is that if maybe the board and maybe the Arts Council can take a look at these token things. Because it's really upsetting and it's not just me. Where they tell us we have to take tokens or you don't take tokens. But then it's mandatory that we take tokens. But yet, we as artists were told. I am very, I'm a very honest person. It hurts me when I'm losing all these customers while I'm seeing with my two eyes. Ask these two guys, other vendors that are so-called buy and sell, taking the cash from customers. Whereas we are losing customers and we are the real artists. Because we spent time, hours to make our art, to go out there and then and present it to our community. Sorry, I get emotional.
No, thank you, Sue. No, and I do know.
And that is not just me. I'm here on behalf of several other artists that have been coming to me to, you know, tell me those kind of stuff.
I will say too, for me, like I reached out to the artists I did know with Creative West. And so many people didn't trust the grant process here. They didn't want to necessarily take the time. Yeah, they didn't, because they've not seen that ever work. And so it was when I was like, no, this is a separate foundation. They have an online program. People got excited. Like I had artists go out of their way to meet with me and we would sit down and talk about what do you love about art? Their history with art. And I would write it out for them in the program. And we were able to submit it right there. And it was wonderful to have something that was that accessible for them. And then the other thing is that for me, like us, we've gone, we went and registered with the Arts Council. We were really excited because we're like, oh, we're gonna know about festivals and opportunities as artists. And then we have never, ever received an email. And so artists here, like as soon as they hear, they try to like tell every artist they know because that's, and that's limited because again, we don't have access to all of the artists. We just have the ones that we've happened to run into. And so when you're talking about events being overflowed when Chinese made products, that's because artists don't know. A lot of times, they have no idea an event is happening in time. And then I tried calling, I've tried going to the Arts Council before. And like, I ended up calling Indigenous Affairs and being given an actual personal phone number that I could call to someone in the Arts Council. Because I couldn't find out when to go.
Leaning a little bit more into connecting to the arts community. Why would it be important for artists to be together? Like, we're asking for a network. We're asking to connect with each other. Over the past month or two, we've sat down, we've had these workshops. We've written twelve grants for people. Like we've put in the work and we're so happy doing it. We love working with people. And if that's what we're here for, is to lean on each other. Because none of us are driving BMWs or Lexuses or have like gold anything on us. We're just trying to live and smile and do the things that are important to us. And those important things are the people around us. And so having that network, that community to say, I can help you write this. I can help you know, it was amazing to me. Excuse me. All the shell artists that were like, oh, no, no. that were like, oh, no, no, you don't need this rotary tool, you need this one. You need, like this one will break on you. This, like you don't need, oh, this is where you get spawnless. That's so amazing, like.
The artists will help each other.
And I just, I know for a fact, some of you around us know so much more than we ever could. And learning and sharing information and going to that big community is.
I can address some of that.
Please do.
I'll go you, um, this one here, Pauline. Want to say something?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, because I am.
And what's your name?
In Neo Davidi. Here in Neo Davidi.
Very neat.
Yeah, I've, I've been here in Saipan for a long time already. And, uh, I really love to stay here. Again, how many years I've been here in the, in Saipan, in the island. Especially when I've been registered an artist on the Arts Council. They have, as, as long as they're on my hobby, because before, uh, art or painting is just only my hobby then during those times. But, uh, little by little, I've learned something more important that I have to do about the art. Especially now, this, this past few days, a few years, I've seen already those students that sometimes they spend their time on, uh, with their friend and doing something that we can see that's not good for them. Sometimes they just only smoking or drinking. And it comes to my mind. It comes to my mind that, uh, all the things that I have, that I, that I, that I, I can see that that it's a gap gape that give me a time to learn on the painting, especially those painting things that I am doing on the leaves and on those branches of the tree that was thrown down during the typhoon. I just make, uh, try to use them as in art. And then little by little too, so I've learned that, uh, we have to concentrate our time for those students, for those kids, especially those things that I, I have always seen on my neighbor there. I don't want to spend more their time on the things that is not good for them when they work in the future. I'm, I've been thinking that those things that are good for them, for the coming future for them. So I try to teach them and I very appreciate to the Arts Council, when they have a project that, uh, opening, opening up and those students or the schools, they ask, uh, artists who can teach all the students, we come to the Arts Council and tell them we are available. And then, uh, that's why when we, we have a chance there last, uh, two months ago in, uh, Tadman, they give us a chance also to talk to the student. And I talked to the student that, uh, we are here just to share to you whatever things that we know in our life as an artist. Before, me too, at your age, I did not thinking about those art. It can help me to, to be good in my future. Now I guess share to you the things that we, I've experienced in my life that, uh, art is he- is helping, helping me to be good in my future. Now you can see me sometimes on the newspaper that we won on the contest because we try our best to do our best we can do on a painting. And that's why I want you to share this to you so that in the future you may think also that the art is very important. Now at your age, now you're still, you're still young. You have to think something that you can be good in the future in your life. And then when, little by little, I teach them, we teach them. And then, but before we're gonna start our teaching for them, I always pray, pray for a, opening, uh, on our, uh, teaching that we just ask, uh, God, uh, we can help us each other so that everything that I know I can share to you and you can receive it also. And the thing that you can, you can ask something that you don't understand, that you don't know, that you want to learn more, just let me know and open up. I, I treat you as my kid, or my, my brother or sister and whoever you are. Just let me know that I am open. My heart is always open for you. To teach everything that you want to know so that you can be a good artist in the future. That was the thing that I might go to do, to be good on those students. And that's why when we have an event in, uh, Teshak Marianas and also there in Play Play Festival, some of the students that we teach from Kadman, they're gonna go there. And that, he knows me and he talked to me, why you don't come back there? Why you don't have a chance to go there? Because you have a, so supposed to be, that was the plan. That's why, and it seems to me then that I get the happy in myself then that this, those students are interested about art. And that's why I've been trying to do more things to follow it up and then, uh, to go back there and OAP and from others school. We are of, even a chance also to try to teach them also from the other school that were uh, interested about our art. And that's why I really appreciate about the things that are coming up now for the help of the best part that I've given us, uh, um, titles is that we can help all those, what it is that we can use. Because sometimes we are having a problem also so that we can prepare all the things, the paint, everything. We have to prepare them for those, uh, students. That's why now that you have to come over here that there are help for all artists that we need some help, then we can be a guarantee that, uh, we can ever continue our whole that we can, we can teach for those students who are interested about our art.
Thank you so much. I, I really, the, your passion for teaching the youth just really resonates deeply. Is there anybody else that wants to add something, money in the well, uh, for CCAC staff? Do you guys want to add anything?
I, I just want to add. Artists, artists try to ask, if you guys are working with PSS, ask for supplies. They have. It's not hard to ask. If you guys are doing ligature tour and they call you guys and you say, do you guys have supplies on hand? They'll provide, because I do know they have. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. I want to apologize to you for what you went through. Um, in the year and a half or going on two years since I took over the directorship of Arts Council, there's been a lot of cleaning up. And there's been a lot of obstacles, challenges after challenges of what happened in the past and it's still carrying on now. So I apologize for what you had to go through. These two gentlemen are the coordinators for, for the Arts Council. And so I think you were working with either one of them or two of them, but uh, we will need to sit and discuss because the availability of grant is there. And I also see when I came into office that the challenge is like there is no sense of direction as to where we're gonna go or take it from there. I'm thankful that Ms. Emma became a board member and she has been helping us from the past. And she brought into the office the sense, some kind of direction to know that you go from here and then you go from there. Um, besides the challenges of moving from office to office, we still don't have, um, landline going on two years now. We don't have a website up yet since it was taken down in twenty eighteen. So these are the, the things that I face that I want to build. And along with Ms. Emma and the board, we're working together on making it a better CCAC like she says. Because we came into a jungle and we're still finding our way out from the grass. But we're taking it one day at a time. Hopefully we can move to a better and a bigger office where the system is gonna work and the websites are gonna work, but for now, I'm gonna encourage these two gentlemen that open communication and I'm, I'm sad that I heard your case. I did read your paper when it went in, but then it just got lost somewhere. And so there are so many, um, calls that I would get, like they're looking for their papers, so we're also gonna look into training these two coordinators because they're borrowed coordinators. I appreciate that they're, they're helping out. But then again, it has to be better than what, what it is. Yeah.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
You're welcome. It's frustrating. Yes.
To me, I hold things in, you know, I'm like, it's okay, that's fine, let it go. But then when you give me a space to talk about it, that's when all the emotions come out and you see the passion, you know, so.
And I think artists should be vocal. I'm an artist who's vocal. And so I think we should be vocal that when you call and nobody's getting back to you, call me so I can, because I was a coordinator for Arts Council. And so every time papers or documents come in before it even gets to the director, I make sure that it's polished. So that because I'm thinking the director has meetings, has these things to go to. And so I want that paper to go in where they're just gonna sign off on it. It hasn't been happening. And so it's something that needs to happen. That there's dependability and there's cooperation with the staff and just things that we need to clear out and open up.
Thank you, Gloria. Luela?
Yes, I have a question. Can you guys, uh, advise, like how much, who approves what?
Yes, yes. I can go into like, and I want to address the money and I want to address the registry and the buy and sell. So first off, the artist registry. It has been told to the public that it's a private list. When you look at the artist registry form, right at the top, it says, by signing up for this, I agree to become of a registry that is available for distribution. So it is where we have had a lot of volunteers and staff putting, we've got the list together of everybody and it's eighty percent good. So we're gonna have a list that we can share. We just have to figure out what format it looks like. Because we don't want to share everything or not. Um, so there's that. The other thing, the, the resale thing, that is something that is absolutely prohibited by the NEA grants.
Yes.
Absolutely. We cannot give a grant to somebody who's gonna buy something and resell it, you know. They can buy stuff and make it into something, but you just can't buy and sell. Okay, so that's, and we have to watch out for that and we'll have to keep an eye out on that at festivals and and figure out who it is and then we're just gonna say no more. No more, because there, there are only so many slots. And we want the artists to be there. Um, the other thing is part of the problem that you were running into Divine and that you were running into was the fact that we were using paper applications. And during the change of leadership, there was different versions of the applications and there was the infamous box where things were lost. Um, the box doesn't exist anymore. It's all been cleaned out and distributed to people to follow up on. That's like Orlando has a green folder and maybe yours is in there. Um, but, but we're, we've gone, we've, we're eighty-five percent up and running on GoSmart. I think everybody here touched GoSmart. And I was just on a meeting today with, uh, a bunch of GoSmart users from other arts councils and they have a notice of award process and all that kind of stuff.
Nice.
Okay, so that's, we're trying to, no more paper applications. The only thing is we still need to do the Artist in the School piece and we're trying to get all the right people in the room and that's been very, very difficult because we want PSS and we want, uh, ROTA in so that we can do it right. Because a lot of the artists go into the school. So we're gonna streamline that. That's very high priority and that will affect a lot of you.
Yes, very quick, please, about, about the, uh, workshop. And that's the other thing is the dissemination of the, the information to the artists because I did not get anything and then was asked after, way after the fact when I, I saw it in the Marianas variety that there was a workshop and I'm like, how did Victoria know and I did not know?
Yeah, did you get the email about this meeting today?
I did, but not, but not that email for about, you know, the.
Oh, because, because this was the first time that our, our big registry was used. So it's there and we can start using it.
So then next time, I'm pretty sure there's gonna be a next time.
I do know we had like thirty emails kicked back, so we'll have to follow up, but we can make it better. Okay, so that's Artist in the School.
Why did I interrupt? It's just like, why did I know today's, but I did not, and I'm like,
Money.
Victoria's there? Actually, I did not know.
Money. So, part of the delay was getting grants approved within CCAC and DCCA.
So there, so before they approve, uh,
Okay, no, 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 no.
The grant there has been, you know, it's.
So there's been a process and a lot of the paper applications got lost. And then they got found and then you've been in to recreate some, right? Yeah. So we're, we're fixing that. And we've gotten, all of a sudden, we've got GoSmart and we've had some training and Orlando's been great about helping me get stuff in. So all of a sudden procurement's saying, where are all these applications coming from? They hadn't seen them before and all of a sudden they're just buried. And they don't know what to do with them. So we went up and met with them. And there's, they think it has something to do with after audit findings because of ARPA. They had to really tighten up on procurement policies, which meant you had to have a quote and have to have this. And so a blanket statement went out saying for all payments, you have to go for pure procurement. Well, grants are not procurement. Okay? Yeah, they're different. And we got that ruling. And so now we're gonna switch all of those that are in the system over to a grant. We just need one more document and I, I'm gonna work on that. I started that. I hope to send it off to finance today for final approval. There will be one more document that is, uh, you'll get a notice of award email and a copy of a document that you will need to sign. And I'm trying to figure out how to get it to be e-signed because I just don't do that. Um, but, but we're working on a way to get that done by the end of next week. Everything, okay? What I'm seeing and Gloria about this list is that there are thirty-three outstanding things, outstanding grants. And that does not include the ROTA grants from November of twenty twenty-three. It's not just all procurement either. It's, it's ev- every single possible thing that, that could have been skewed, but it's getting better. You know, the GoSmart is working. Uh, the procurement is having, instead of us saying, okay, we'll do whatever procurement wants, even if it doesn't make sense, we went and met with them and said, this doesn't make sense. Lenny went up and met with them saying, this doesn't make sense. And we, we've, we've worked it out. So now we know what needs to be done and that'll make it better. So what we're all going through right now is cleaning up this whole process from beginning to end. But what I've seen, did you, you did the GoSmart? Have you done one yet? No. You? You, you, you? You, Julie did one. How was it? It was okay, right? Yeah, it's, it's, it's an online application.
I saw Brian's name on the GoSmart, Julie's name, Delani. Not me.
I think we were sitting in the workshop and you had somebody next to you doing it with you? Yeah, so, so all of, so, so procurement is freaking out because all of a sudden, we got it. We got all these applications, bam! And they're like, what are these? We've never seen these before in our life. Because it used to be that it didn't go through procurement, it went through the invoice thing.
For the finance.
Yeah, there's a different way of doing it. So we've identified the problem. And the good problem is, is that we've had like fifty applications in. The bad thing is some of them are over a year old. But we're doing everything we can. I think the board is like completely behind us and I, um, and it's gonna get better. Really. So just bear with us a little bit more. We hear you. You, you, we care. The whole reason we do this is because the artists in this community deserve to have money.
So I have a question.
Of course, anything.
I hope they are with me. You know, it's been thirty days already.
Yeah.
Is there any way that the government will pay us the interest? Because for me, it's like.
Interest?
You know.
I cannot speak to that. Let me do this. Let me do this.
I get frustrated like.
No, I know, I know, I know.
Nothing. When I ask them, they say all this and this and this.
How much did you check?
It's like services is done.
No, I completely understand. I completely understand.
I will, I will understand if it's thirty days, but when it's six to nine months?
Oh, for me, I'm, I'm still fighting for those ROTA artists from November twenty twenty-three.
Just like what I told you, I, I don't like to go over, you know, over you guys and go up to, up, up there because I don't wanna you know, talk to them. I just wanna ask you guys, please. You know, there's a lot of people out there, like some of them like, they just told me like, I'm, I'm done with that.
That's why Gloria and I went to procurement. That's why I've been in contact with Secretary Narita. Um, because I'm a numbers nerd, right? I don't know if you know that about me. And so a lot of the words they say, Gloria might not recognize that word and then I hear it and I go, ah, it's not right. I hear it and I go, that's not right. Like I would hear it and go, no, this isn't right. So we're, we're trying to fix it. Um I don't think, I don't think it, any of it happened because of anybody's bad behavior. But mostly because we're still learning and there were staff changes and then they keep moving their offices and it's been really challenging, really challenging. But we're all, we're working together as much as we can to get this done for you guys. Interest? I can ask.
Because you know, you know, driving, driving back and forth is not, it's too expensive.
I know, I know. Okay, no, it just gave me an idea, but okay, go ahead.
I, I, I think it's um important to also known for the artist, the because of recent conversation that Gloria and, um Anna's been having with procurement. And with the new MUNIS system, we wouldn't have known that payment process exists in the MUNIS system yet, so once they access, um also, you know, um grant them some time for this changes to be made in the MUNIS system. If there are any needs for changes in the MUNIS system, because like, Emma was saying, these are not actual payments, but more about honor, right? Uh grant.
They're grants, several ways.
There's still a need to uh figure out how that can be done, so.
And I can say that somebody from procurement has volunteered, if given access to the CCAC MUNIS, that she will help move everything over as quickly as possible. So hopefully that won't be a delay getting moved over. And then we'll push as hard as we can to get the money drawn as quickly as possible.
Okay, you're talking about all these processes that you guys are running?
Yeah.
For example, at this point in time, if they asked me to do services for, because they're gonna write up a grant, would you recommend I go do that services?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. The other thing I would say is keep after CCAC for the past due payment for the DFS work that you did. Keep after CCAC for the, the thing that, um, the grant, that, you know, four times, five times a charm. There are other people I've talked to who said, yeah, I did something at Dan Dan, but I'm just not even gonna try to get the money because it's too much of a hassle. It's like if you hear of artists who haven't gotten paid, who haven't done the paperwork, they should speak up so that we can find them and get their paperwork in and, and get it in and done, okay? So you know, if you've turned it in and, and I've got a list of people here that have stuff in the system, but, and I looked at it, that's when I noticed the ROTA artists aren't here. Well theoretically, because they're already up in MUNIS, but they're probably on hold too. You know, so that's about fifty. But that's what procurement got hit with and just blew them out of the water because they, they hadn't seen these before.
Ms. Emma, do you have a number of how many artists have not been paid from this year back?
I'd say about fifty.
Fifty. Here, Tinian and Rota?
I would guess fifty, because right here, about thirty-three. And I think there's sixteen ROTA. And then there's like she did the service and I haven't see, I've seen the paperwork, but not the final version. So it could be as high as fifty.
And these are professional services that are already?
These, these are grants.
Oh, grants.
Yeah, these are all grants.
Okay, what about services that are already done and they're waiting for other grants?
Yes, yes, they're grants in support of arts.
So we have fifty pending?
If we didn't have any NEA funds and you were having to pay them, then it might be for services contract. But we are, the, the funds that CCAC has is to support the artists, arts and education, um folk arts, yeah, so there's money for grants and that's what we want. So just so you guys know, there's about a quarter of a million dollars a year of funds that come from NEA for artists. And we're behind paying that out back to fiscal year twenty-two.
Oh wow.
Okay? We're pushing as fast as we can because we don't wanna lose those funds and the artists deserve that.
But isn't there a, isn't there a thirty day turnaround for granters to, I mean, that's, that's the word I'm hearing.
I, I, you know what, Anna, I don't know until, until we have all this system in place. I can't answer that. It should be quicker.
Yeah, but now it's like that the word out there in the street is the granters do for, they require a thirty day turnaround.
It depends on the funder. I've seen like some funders where you put in your draw, you get it the next day. I've seen some, you put it in, you get it in a week. I've seen some, you put it in, it gets two weeks. I've never seen anything for over thirty days, you know, but.
And then it also depends on the bulk of um the applications that they're gonna upload to the granters.
And that has to do with if the, if finance is putting it in batches and waiting until they have like ten, well, maybe we can encourage them to just
flow it.
Flow it once a week at least, you know?
When you say granters, who, who, like you guys are born?
National Endowment for the Arts, Administrate A&amp;A.
So the grants that these artists apply, does it go through you guys or through you guys?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, then if the request goes to finance through the MUNIS system and then finance does the draw from NEA. Okay, and then they get the money, then they spend it.
If NEA approves?
If NEA approves.
Oh, if NEA approves?
Yeah, so one of us. CAC is, you know, we have criteria to approve the grants and we're, you know, educating people on what that is. Like a buy and sell wouldn't work. If NEA catches that, they'll say no. If it's construction, NEA will say no. There's just, you know, certain things that they will not fund.
So if I write a grant, I'm an artist and I write a grant, I submit it, you guys approve it, then upload it to the MUNIS through all this, but then again, we have to wait another thirty days for the grant? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying I don't know how long it really takes until we get all the backend work.
Um so this is, anyway, from experience, um.
With National Endowment for the Arts?
For several grant programs as an artist. Um I think a lot of us rely on teachers to make all those schedules and plans for us, but I think we have to look at it at the board capacity, right? The board only needs every three months or so depending, right? Uh I don't know how the process can be for a program.
Right now, we're scheduled for monthly and we've also been, uh we're gonna be doing it electronically.
But what you can do is you can project every three months of my, um s- school stuff that you're gonna do. And this could really help the teachers because the teachers already have a list of things that they have to do under daily basis, right? So all the projects that I've done personally on, on grant are usually I'm the one who applies for the grant. And then I'm the one who schedules all those events that I'm gonna do a demonstration. And I hate that this is gonna have to fall back on the artist, but um an example was Creative West. A lot of people didn't apply for it because they don't know to write grants and that's because they don't um try to learn it. But there's a lot of really good sources like Mango who does um free uh grant writing trainings and whatnot, workshops. So I think we all have the tools we need here, but we also have to shift our minds as an artist. I'm a carver, photographer, filmmaker, writer. Um we have to shift those mindsets of, okay, I'm a carver. I'm only gonna carve, I'll wait for TSS to come in to do a demonstration and actually be proactive about it and write a projected plan of three months, thinking that, okay, it's gonna take three months for NEA to review that. At least for the next three months, I have this covered. In the second one, I write for the next three months.
Well, that could be done, could be done. I mean, it was careful.
Oh, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure the procurement can do, once that's approved, procurement can do one open PO. And then every time you, um, every day that you do practice, they'll pay those things.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was talking to Nick about. It's like, how do you open up where, you know, like the, the schools, no? Like, it's like you're, you're projected, the schools are gonna have cultural, their, their month of cultural is in May. Now you project how many schools and then how many artists do they need? Like you have that open, so when the artists come in and apply for that, it's there. And if there, there's remaining money, you know?
It's gonna be person by person.
Yeah, no, that's what I mean. Like it's a, it's a person by person, person thing.
So one PO for one culture.
So the, the thing though is that whole open PO thing, that's the, through the purchase requisition module and we're moving away from. Yeah, be careful about the words.
True, true.
So what we're hoping to is once we live through this and you live through it with us and thank you for your patience, I will ask for interest. But don't hold your breath, I will ask. But I think it could be easier because as, especially when we were going through the GoSmart thing for the Creative West brand and we were seeing how people were working together, I think that we can have the best Arts Council in the Pacific. I really, I swear. And that means the best, the artists are taken care of and they're, they're, you know, the artists are sacred.
You know, Annie, I'm going back to your thirty day question. I don't think NEA would take thirty days. If, so the process here goes, when your papers, it goes through the MUNIS system before everything is cleared. Then when it's done with procurement, it'll go to financial services on the federal side. Yeah, so like, uh for example, Mr. Littlemore's experience where they waited for nine months. Arts Council went through the process of procurement, but when it got to the federal side, they waited for it to be a batch. So all their documents were like since, in since June, they did not upload it to the granters until October. So um I feel that if federal finance just flow on whatever grant, it can be won. At NEA, there's panelists every day waiting to review. But if you package it like that and that many, of course, it's gonna take thirty days because the reviewers, the panelists have to review each and every grant application, so I think Ms. Emma and I also need to work with the federal side at finance to see, help us just upload, even if one comes in, then one goes, rather than to package it. And everybody waited for nine months to get paid.
I also wanted to say like thank you to all of you who came out and actually are willing to listen to the artists and hear their stories and I know everyone's a little emotional at the moment and this, because we, I know at the end of the day, we all really care about art. And so hearing from us like things that, because I know for me, I've had a lot of artists who talk to me and I'm like, you know, guys, this is like, this is going to be an amazing Arts Council. Like maybe we even you guys, if anything we can do to help, let us know. Like we really want, um, yeah.
And I always say that I wish that in every department that we're working with, that we're working with artists, so you know, sometimes I, I tell them, you need to be a, to be an artist to understand our point of view.
Yeah.
But you know, I, I just wish that everyone we work with in every department is an artist so that because they're like, I had instances where like, your bands are very expensive. It's supposed to be fifty dollars. So I told the guy, I said, go out there, take an instrument, open your mouth to the element for four hours and then come back and tell me that you're worth fifty dollars. Yeah?
Yeah, right.
So um anything else, otherwise, do you wanna say something? Yes, please.
So um first of all, my name is Arseni Warham. I'm the board member from Tinian.
I'm so sorry, Arseni.
So anyway, I just wanted to thank you all for coming into this meeting and sharing all your obstacles and experiences and frustration. And I just wanna let you know that these boards present now just formulated, I mean officially formulated uh last Jan- January. Uh there was no war for how many years? Seven years?
Oh wow.
Seven years, there was no war. So everybody is just a delay.
Yeah, so probably that's some of the delays that we inherit. Uh all this application was not approved from us, if it needs to go through us, because like I said, we just officially uh formalized last January. And then we, we had all these uh grants, applicants that have not been paid and and I wanna thank Ms. Emma for implementing the GoSmart and also with the assistance of the staff.
I still need to train. I haven't. I don't know what it looks like.
Yeah, but um like I said, I thank you for your patience and and I hope that from now on, we will have this communication, the registry and yeah, and probably work with the, the financial service and procurement again to get everything, you know, run smoothly. So that you guys won't have to be waiting for your money to get your supplies, to go out and do outreach to art people. And you know, art, art is very important. It tells our story, you know, our culture, so we need to, to push forward and make that grow. And like I said, I, I apologize for all your, the delays in this payment, but we will try and work hard to get that through you.
Mr. Warham, I have a question.
Yes.
Seven years is too long. So what happened? Do you guys get every year uh new funding or what happens to the funds when we don't use it? Does it get rolled over or do you guys use it?
They ask for an extension.
Oh, extension.
And we've been able to get extensions because of typhoons and COVID. But right now, we're paying down fiscal year twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-two and we've only got, I think, until, until the year August.
We have until August.
And then four, that's twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four. That's five hundred thousand. We have until September, the end of the year.
One thing I would, if you guys gonna um create for us, um artists, all of us, English is my second language. I am not really good in writing. So it'd be nice if you guys have a list of someone's, you know, I'm not gonna be going to the church every time to be only with my grants, so it'd be nice if you guys have a list where, um for example, if I see Lani's name, I feel more comfortable and she would understand um how I work. So it'd be nice if our art, you guys would have a list of individuals that can assist us.
Or now that we have the GoSmart, if Lani can operate GoSmart and you want her to help you, you can get into the system with her or you can come to, we're still working on our coordinators to provide technical support.
I think that's a brilliant thing to add to the application.